Okay, good afternoon. We'll call this meeting to order. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Ahn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clody.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
And Commissioner Sacks is absent.
Okay. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for joining us on short notice. And we didn't coordinate the outfits today. If I had tried, we probably couldn't have pulled this off. If I had asked for everyone to show up in the same shirt, it wouldn't have happened. So, no, we do appreciate everyone being here and really this is, my hope is that we, I'm actually excited to see so many members of the community here representing so many different elements and facets of our community. Because true, this is something we're facing as a community. And so my hope today is that we can have a productive conversation really about how, you know, what measures and steps we can and should take. So how, there's really no formal agenda. How I see this going is, my thought was, get some, hear from staff, talk as a commission a little bit, open it up for some public comments, certainly want to hear from you all as well, then we'll maybe talk some more as a commission and figure out what decisions we want to make. I'd say before I turn over to staff for any presentations they would have, I'd say, you know, for us here, the four of us here as a commission, but really as a community, that there is no perfect response in times like this. No matter what, you're going to find somebody that's going to criticize. You're either doing too much or too little. Obviously, just like you all, we're concerned for everyone involved. We're concerned for our families, for our fellow citizens, and for our business owners that are already feeling the impact. We're not, you know, we're trying to take all that into account, not trying to add to any panic, not wanting to overreact, but also not wanting to underreact either. There's, you know, ramifications on both sides. So that's what today is all about is, you know, what do we want to do as a community? As we've all followed the national headlines and even more local headlines now, we look at our event schedule coming up. We've got large events, we've got small events. So that's the question is, do we need to start taking measures as a community? So without, I'll pause, I see a slideshow here, I guess if, Sean, if you have kind of, if you want to share some of the latest, greatest, and then I'll have a few more comments and then we'll open up as a commission. And then again, we'll hear from the public as well, once the commission's given a few thoughts, and we've heard from staff.
Very good. Good afternoon. We've been leaning into this for about two weeks now, so we were a little ahead of the game of our brother and sister cities, trying to get ahead of it. We want to make sure that we had as much information as we could going into it and to make sure that we were prepared if it came up on us quicker than we anticipated. Fortunately, it hasn't yet. President Trump was expected to declare a national state emergency at 3:00 on the drive over. I had yet to confirm that actually happened, but if that were, if that does happen, he does declare national state of emergency. That will free up funds under the Stafford Act, which will help trickle down through the state and county governments. Currently, sixteen hundred twenty-nine U.S. illnesses, forty-one deaths, forty-two confirmed cases in Florida. So forty-two cases in Florida, only two deaths, and three of those forty-two are in Volusia County.
And just Chief, as of literally forty-five seconds ago, President Trump has declared national emergency, so.
Very good. So that will free up monies through the Stafford Act and will allow it to trickle through the different various emergency management functions of the state and county governments. Statewide school closures, that is an entire state that has declared schools are going to be closed following the spring break vacation. There are six in the U.S. and one in D.C., West Virginia, Ohio, Maryland, New Mexico, Oregon, and Michigan. Obviously, county, local school boards have made their own decision, but as far as statewide closings of the schools, that's happening in six plus Washington, D.C. In New Smyrna Beach, the nursing homes and ALFs have limited access for visitation and things like that. Most of them have just cut it off altogether, with the exception of Brilliance ALF, they had, immediate family was allowed to continue to enter and visit. Governor DeSantis at about 2:00 declared that he's going to prohibit all visitation, so we will be following up on that to ensure that they are abiding by that within our ability to control that. So limited or no visitation in nursing homes going forward. Advent Health typically has five portals of entry. At Advent Health, New Smyrna, they are going down to two portals of entry, one being the Schilldecker entrance and one being the emergency department. At the Schilldecker entrance, they will have a screening staff 24/7. They're going to be doing diagnostic tests of anybody who is coming in the door for visitations and whatnot. Advent Health is a 109-bed facility. They have fourteen ICU beds available on any given day. And on a local, more local level, to me, the fire department is reaching out to the strategic stockpile, which is a county and a state initiative to get more PPE, personal protective equipment, that we don't have already on hand. We're trying to get a little bit more into our stockpile so we have it if and when this does break out. I'm going to turn it over real quickly to Dr. Melanie Vandemark. Dr. Vandemark is the Associate Program Director at Halifax Medical Center. She is board certified by the Florida Family Medicine Association and the ABOM, and she's going to do a presentation on coronavirus.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right, Sean asked me to just prepare some information about coronavirus, and so the information I'm going to present is really information that has come from studies that have been done from Wuhan, China, and also information that's come out from the California Infectious Disease Council, because they've been hit kind of first since they're so close to Asia. And so we'll just kind of run through some of the facts that we know. So objectives, really kind of learn about the epidemiology of the coronavirus nineteen, how it spreads, what's the disease trajectory, and then understand how we can limit the spread of the disease. So what is it? It is coronavirus disease nineteen, 2019 is a respiratory illness that can spread from person to person. It's caused by SARS-CoV-2 virus. It's a novel virus. It was seen first in Wuhan, China in 2019. It is very similar to the SARS virus and the MERS virus, which are also both coronaviruses. The difference between the COVID-19 and SARS and MERS is that we believe the COVID-19 is infectious before you're symptomatic, which is not the case with SARS or MERS. But it seems to be similar virulence, just that the spread seems to be a little bit faster because the symptoms, like I said, you're infectious before you're symptomatic. The thought is this has come from Wuhan, China wholesale seafood market where they sell illegal animals. This is a zoonotic disease, so COVID-219 is known to exist in the animal population. The main vectors are this scaly, this bat and this scaly anteater. So the transmission that they think is it came from those two animals was transmitted to humans, and now it is human-to-human transmission. So the, what this virus does is it binds to this angiotensin-converting enzyme two. That enzyme is seen in the lung cells, those alveolar cells, so that's why this disease is primarily respiratory, because what it looks for and what it attacks is this, that ACE2, which is expressed in the lungs. So what they think right now is the estimated incubation time is about one to 14 days, median being five to six days. But they've also seen cases where it's been up to 24 days that they think there's been an incubation between an exposure and someone developing symptoms. The thought is that this is transmitted primarily by respiratory droplets, so that's someone coughing, sneezing, and that travels about six feet from you when you cough and sneeze. They have seen the virus in blood and stool. The CDC does not know if that's infectious or not yet. About forty-one percent of all the, of cases so far that were seen in China were healthcare-associated, which means it was healthcare workers or people who were infected once they were in healthcare buildings, hospitals, nursing homes, things like that. There was a report on nine pregnant patients that did not show significant transmission and did not show transmission to the infants. So there's, but it's kind of, that's only nine patients. We don't really know, but there's a thought that pregnant women aren't as at risk. And most of the evidence suggests that the deaths that we've seen have occurred in the very elderly and those with comorbid conditions, and we'll go through that. But it's not the elderly with comorbid conditions, it's the elderly and those with comorbid conditions. The main symptoms that they see is fever. This tends to be a low-grade fever, so you don't have to get that fever of like 103.5 that you would see with the flu. This tends to be a lower-grade fever, dry cough, fatigue, maybe some abdominal pain, diarrhea, or headache. In Wuhan, for their hospitalized patients, once they were hospitalized, they had dyspnea, which is shortness of breath after about five days of hospitalization. And then they had ARDS, which I'll talk about, which is Adult Respiratory Distress Syndrome, and that is where the lungs get really, really inflamed, kind of like shock lung. And those patients usually had to be artificially ventilated on a breathing machine to help them breathe. The median age of the patients hospitalized at Wuhan was 51 years old. The median age for those needing ICU care was 66 years old. Of those 66-year-old patients, seventy-two percent of them had additional comorbid conditions. This probably isn't important to you, but for your hospital staff and nurses, what they see when they're kind of testing without a definitive test, they're seeing low white blood cell counts, which is the lymphopenia, a prolonged PTT, which is like a bleeding indicator, and elevated LDH. And then the chest CT shows, which is the CAT scan, shows bilateral patchy shadows or ground glass opacities. That's what we see in ARDS, that Adult Respiratory Distress Syndrome. They, on all of the ones from Wuhan, China, chest X-rays were pretty much negative on patients, and then they did the CT, the CAT scans of the chest, and they saw that. The lower risk seems to be kids under age 15. Coronavirus, not COVID-19, but coronavirus is out there in the community all the time, and so kids are, get coronavirus all the time and they get upper respiratory infections and colds. So that's why we think that kids are kind of protected at this point. Higher risk are older adults, people with comorbid conditions, which can just be hypertension, diabetes, any sort of lung disease, asthma, COPD, any sort of heart disease, healthcare workers, and again, pregnancy is unknown. For the Wuhan, China patients, there's kind of the breakdown by ages. I'm not going to read this slide to you, but you can see that the majority of them were over 30. So that's really, when they're saying elder adults, they really didn't break it down into really good statistics for us, because 30 to 79 is a humongous range. So it's really unclear, which is kind of everyone's frustration, is we're getting real unclear data all the time regarding this. But the majority, if you're under 30, I guess, you're more protected, but 30 to 79 was the majority of the cases. From the Infectious Disease Association of California, they've found that co-infection with other viruses is unlikely, so that if you have the flu or you test positive for like RSV, which is another type of respiratory virus, then you don't have coronavirus or COVID-19, that you're unlikely to have two infections at the same time of this virus. And then there's also very few additional bacterial infections, so like influenza is deadly because people get bacterial pneumonias on top of influenza. But this virus is a problem just because of the virus. It's not because other infections are occurring. It's the actual virus. So the top one, the reverse transcriptase polymerase chain reaction testing is the test that's being used by the health department. It's very sensitive. There's limited access. Some people have to be retested. If you're tested too early, you may test, may test negative, but you're actually positive. Quest, I know, I'm not sure about LabCorp, but Quest as of March 19th has developed a testing kit, and it's on the market. Hospitals and doctors do not have it yet, and we don't know how to use it. We don't know how to test it. We don't even know how to get the sample. So there's a test out there, but there's going to be a delay to getting that out to the people who need to use it. The treatment for this, there's no vaccine. There's obviously anything, time something like this happens, people start working on vaccines. Takes about a year and a half usually to develop a vaccine. There's a couple randomized controlled trials already going on in California. This antiviral remdesivir from Gilead has shown some efficacy, but again, it's extremely limited amount, a number of people who are going to be able to receive that in a controlled trial. The main symptom, the main way you treat this, take Tylenol, Motrinif, if you have a fever, drink lots of fluids, use cough suppressants, use oxygen if you need it, prevent, prevent, prevent transmission. So from the CDC perspective, the goal is kind of prevention and to flatten the curve of transmission. So the thought is, this is already here. We've already heard cases are in Florida. This is the travel for, destination for many, many countries and many, many states. So it's here. We just need to try to prevent further spread. The CDC supports giving everyone pneumococcal vaccine if they're at high risk to decrease risk for bacterial pneumonia, and then to make sure that everybody is really good with all the rest of their healthcare, and then reducing exposure, avoiding crowds, cruises, unnecessary travel. And the thought is that healthcare at this point and businesses should be trying to figure out alternatives to face-to-face transactions if at all possible. And if you're symptomatic, stay home, call your doctor, or the health department. And those are some references for you. So I know that was quick and brief, but I didn't want this to go too long, and if anyone, I don't know if you want me to take questions or wait till.
So first, thank you very much. We really appreciate, I mean, I got, I think maybe half of that, but it's a lot of great, great information. And so we really appreciate you pulling that together for us. Any questions of, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Doctor. Thank you for coming and sharing this with us today. Two questions. Number one is, if someone feels they have the symptoms or are concerned, is there something exact they should do? In other words, calling the health department, that seems like a bureaucratic line.
Call their, call their doctor and tell them the symptoms, and then they can kind of triage that to see whether or not it warrants a call from the health department. The physicians can have a physician line to call the health department, so then we will call, the health department will tell the patient if they're feeling okay, stay home, and the health department will come out and test them in their homes.
What about over weekends or evenings going to these clinics around town? Is that a, do the clinics, is that okay? Do they want them, or?
They won't, they're still a number for the health department over the weekend, but you know, it's a real, it's not going to be as good as your own, you know, primary care doctor and that follow-up and being able to get that accomplished. So I can't speak for the urgent cares in the ER, but they don't have any testing on site at this point, so if you're not super sick, I would just stay home.
And if you, and if someone does feel like they need to go to the hospital, clarify for me, I kind of caught on to that, that what, our local hospital here, Advent, is doing what? They're putting tents out?
So the hospitals, as I know it, have been testing, they have a normal respiratory panel testing kit that doesn't test for this. So if you test positive for something else, then we can kind of be assured it's not that. There was a limited supply of some additional type of testing, which was gone. Now it's been overused. So at this point, as if there's a suspected patient, they're being isolated into the rooms that have reverse, I don't know, reverse air, reverse pressure. And then they're being treated as if they have it until they are tested negative for it. As for setting up things outside of the hospital, unless we've run out of beds, it's probably not necessary, and it'll be safer for everyone to be in the hospital in an enclosed room. But the CDC recommends private room, respiratory precautions, and the reverse pressure rooms to prevent spread throughout the hospital.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for the, for the doctor? If, we may have some later, so we do appreciate you being here. So anything else from staff? Sean, is that, Chief, anything else, or is that all you had?
Yeah, the only other thing I'd like to add, for those of you who have a health insurance provider, which most of you likely should, if, check to see if they have telemedicine or an app-based medicine, because what that allows you to do is to either talk to the doctor over the phone from your, from your living room in your PJs, or hop on the app and do the exact same thing. That prevents cross-contamination, you walking into the waiting room and causing a panic. In some doctors' offices, they're sending you back out to your car, and they'll come talk to you through the window of your car. They don't, that's how much of a barrier they want between them. So telemedicine's the way to go if it's provided by your insurance carrier.
Okay, thank you. All right, so gentlemen, the real question before us is, we've got the, in front of us, I think we all have three, three documents, maybe more. We've got the 2020 event schedule. We've got those events that are specifically at the Brandon Center and the Coronado Civic Center. And then staff has also worked with the staff from our neighboring cities throughout Volusia County and kind of putting together a running list of different measures that have been taken, how different cities are approaching this. Obviously, everyone's kind of right where we are, trying to figure out what, what to do, when to do it. I think there will be more meetings like this at other cities, is what I'm hearing. They're kind of pulling these same kind of meetings together to have these discussions. And again, I want to reiterate, we're, we're not trying to add to any panic. We're not wanting to overreact, but we're not wanting to underreact either. And we know, I will guarantee you, no matter what we do, there'll be folks that disagree with that. This is just one of those decisions that we have to, we have to make some hard decisions. Again, working hopefully with the community, but no matter what we do, there will be those that think we made the wrong decision, and that will be what it will be. So the question really is, what measure should we take? We've got these things staring at us. We've got a few events that are happening, you know, literally this weekend. We've got one tonight. I think some, I just, I think Kyle told me right before, some of these events are already proactively canceled by the folks that were putting them on. I think the Hub On Canal event, I've heard, is, that's canceled tomorrow already. Thank you for.
Postponed.
Postponed, yeah, that's a good, that's a great, it's a great, there you go, June 20. And you know, I'm glad you said that, because that reminds me, the other thing I want to talk about today as we talk through this, no matter what we do, you know, this is impacting our tourism-based economy. Already is. We're hearing about the cancellations in our hotels and the hotels around us, and that has a trickle-down all the way through our tourism-based economy. So I want to, we're not going to solve it all today, but I'm already trying to figure out, how can we help rebound from this as quickly as possible? So when we're on the other side of this, and we will be, but when we get to the other side of this, what things can we do? How can we help facilitate as quick of a rebound as possible, help get these events rescheduled, clear any roadblocks or red tape that we can to help get things kick-started again for our tourism-based economy? So we'll get to that when we, when we get to it. So my thought, gentlemen, is, you know, I thought long and hard about this, and I've read as much as I can and talked to as many experts as I can. I'm no expert on this. There's no manual for how to handle these things, so I've done everything I can. I'll tell you my thoughts are. I think we would be not out of line to begin canceling events. The city-sponsored element, we're not, we can't tell private business what they can and cannot do necessarily at this point. But the city-sponsored element, any permits we've issued for events or any events that are held on city property that are, you know, have any measure of scale to them, I think we should begin proactively canceling those, I think, starting as early as Monday, and I don't really see a lot between now and then. The hub was the big one that was between now and then, so with that already being postponed, I think we should be moving to postpone the rest of these. And I don't want to walk through every single event, but that's just kind of where my head is at. And then on the back end, I would look to work with staff and our community, business community to, you know, waive some fees and do some other things to help kick-start on the back end of this once we're past it. So that's where my head's at. I wanted to hear from the commission first, and then we'll pause after that and hear from the community and get some input from those of you out there that are, that are here to speak on this item as well. So thoughts from the commission?
I'm okay to hear from them.
You want to start with them? Okay.
I think it's important that we take pretty strong steps now. One thing I've learned from going through similar type of things elsewhere is the more proactive you are in the beginning, the shorter the event is. Once you let it get out of hand, it's really hard to contain and bring it back together. Yes, we should cancel some of our events, especially ones involving the public and large events. I'm not clear on how strong we should be on outside type of events. Perhaps we could hear a little bit more on that. As to canceling events in the Brandon Center, I think we could probably suggest to people, the organizers, that we think they should cancel them. We should tell them that we are going to be taking extra precautions in those facilities, but that there is no guarantee that it's going to stop any events, any transmission from happening. I just don't know if it's up to us to cancel a private event. I know that it's on our property, but that's kind of my feelings on that. I do think that anything that's geared towards seniors should be canceled by us on our property, even if it is a private event. That would be the only difference I would take. I also don't know, we have so many youth sports programs. They are the least affected by this. However, they all come with adults. So my thoughts are mixed on what we do along those lines. As to our own meetings, we do have a commission meeting coming up. I think we should hold it, and I think we should hear only essential time-related events. No presentations, just subjects that require us to respond in a timely manner we can deal with.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, or do we go to the public? We'll hear from, all right, any of you members of the public wish to speak on this item? Please come ahead, but stay six feet away from each other while you do it.
We're all using the same microphone.
There's hands, and it does, yeah.
I am representing one of the at-risk groups, being an elder.
I think we all are.
Just a couple comments. I appreciate the doctor's overview, and I had done just a little bit of research on the history of pandemics. Good reading, bed at night. And one of the things that is in common since 1600s is that they do run the course, which is. is a good, is good news, and, um, that usually the vaccines come too late because it takes so long to get them, but it does help you if there's a second occurrence. And, but the third thing is the value of public health, clean water, washing hands, all those kinds of things that we're already hearing about, and social isolation. And that's what I'd, I'd like just to speak to that, um, speaking kind of from my mental health hat. Uh, The Guardian has an excellent article that just came out today. It's called "The Family Lockdown Guide: How to Emotionally Prepare for Quarantine." And I'm already seeing this in my family. The, uh, people in Philadelphia and Massachusetts are on total, uh, home lockdown, schools are closed, everything's been canceled. One of the things I'm seeing is the panic of people facing their kids 24/7, uh, and, um, and not having the tools. Uh, some people are skilled at teaching and homeschooling, but many are not. And many of the schools in Massachusetts and Pennsylvania are just telling the parents they have to homeschool with very little guidance or preparation. So if we're talking about a longer period of time, I think the city could take some leadership, uh, maybe on our website, and maybe having consultants available, to help people deal with being at home. Um, because I think boredom is an issue, um, but I also think panic, anxiety, and certainly that some of the clients that I've been seeing lately are getting increasingly depressed, uh, with the stock market issues, with the, the feeling vulnerable in that age group. Um, so I do think there will be challenges for people's mental health and mental well-being. So I think the city has a, a chance now at this point to maybe do something on the website to, to talk maybe just even generally about how do you deal with quarantine and maybe find people that are specialists in helping people do that. But that's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you this copy.
All right.
It gives some very good guidelines.
Yes, I spent four hours watching way too much media coverage last night. Um, I'm Elaine Stathakis. For those of you who don't know me, I represent the Flagler Avenue Business Association. I am on the Board of Directors. I'm also the founder of the Flagler Avenue Business Association Hospitality Group, which represents 17 restaurants on Flagler Avenue. I am also the Director of Marketing for Flagler Tavern, which has an event that you've issued a permit. So I'm coming before you on multiple, um, different directions. I'm also a business owner on Flagler Avenue at 306 Flagler Avenue, a small jewelry boutique, and I am a long-term resident and live beachside. So I think you could say I'm a stakeholder on steroids. And coming from every direction, there is nothing more important. I mean, I didn't even put makeup on today. I barely slept. I have been up all night crafting our statement, Flagler Tavern statement, trying to, as we all are, figure out what's the best course of action. Do, do we alarm people? Do we wear gloves when we serve food or do we not? You know, um, what is the best thing? And there are some conclusions that we came to, both as an organization and as a business group, and also from Flagler Tavern's perspective. And there are a couple of points that I wanted to just bring to your attention. Number one, Flagler Avenue businesses want to work with the commission to do what's right for our community. There is nothing more important to us than the safety of our community, our neighbors, our families, our customers, our staff. No dollar makes up for that. We are very concerned about the livelihood of our employees. This is the busiest time of year. We have Bike Week, Spring Break, and St. Patrick's Day. And I did want to point out to you, Mayor, that you said nothing much is happening after Monday. Tuesday is St. Patrick's Day, and it is the busiest day of the year in the hospitality industry. And it is a big deal for us. Yeah. Yeah, and primary voting. There's a lot going on. So there were a couple of things. I received a barrage of emails yesterday from varying businesses with their statement and their responses, and one that really struck me was from Visit Florida, which as you all know is the official marketing agency for the state of Florida, and it's what we actually included in Flagler Tavern's statement. Um, the state of Florida is still saying that Florida's tourism industry is open for business, and we are ready to welcome visitors who are safe to travel. I think if that is still, as of today, Florida's, the state of Florida's position, that should be New Smyrna's position, that anyone who isn't currently under travel restrictions suggested by the CDC or currently self-isolating is welcome to come to Florida for spring break. And they should be welcome to come to New Smyrna as well. This is a huge part of our economy. Um, we are not recommending people cancel trips to Florida, so they're still actively marketing Florida as a destination. They're not marketing it to Germany, Italy, China, and other destinations, obviously. We have several events before you. Um, one of my primary concerns, when you say cancel events, what types of events, what size? Um, there's lots of conversation across the United States today about, uh, mass events, large events, and everyone's determination of what that is. The CDC still, as of just before walking into this meeting, said 1,000 people constituted a massive event. California, where I was born and raised, says it's 250. I would ask the commission to make a determination on behalf of New Smyrna, what we consider a massive event, because that can help guide us on what's appropriate and what's not appropriate for our individual groups and businesses. I think it's also important as representative of a larger business, what that ramification is for us as we continue to operate. Um, I do want to bring to everyone's attention that every single one of our restaurant members of the hospitality group are all serve-safe certified. We follow safe practices. We are all members of the National Restaurant Association, and so many of the practices that people are being encouraged across the nation are things that we do every day. It is rubber gloves by everyone touching food all the time. It is washing your hands multiple times. At Flagler Tavern, we have invested in additional sanitation stations at our entrances. Um, we've got notifications up at the entrances, that our employees have all been notified and counseled with following all the regulations. We have notices in our bathrooms. We have extended our cleaning hours. Our cleaning crew comes in every single day and wipes down every surface, and our staff now wipes down every menu, salt shaker, um, surface, advertisement where anyone can come across what sanitizes them, as well as everything you eat on, everything in the kitchen. Uh, for the events that are before you, that we've issued permits, specifically Wine Walk, um, which is coming up at the end of March, uh, hopefully, we plan to do the same thing. We have met, uh, yesterday and devised a plan which would include sanitation stations at every single location, as well as at the ticket booths where we sell the tickets. Um, one of the things, your discussion about what constitutes a major event is really important to us. A lot of people ask questions about the upcoming race, St. Patrick's Day race, um, which is on county property. We have been in contact with the county twice yesterday, and they gave us the green light to go ahead. The size of that race is historically less than 200 participants. We have 100 registered. We don't anticipate more. So if we were following the guidelines of 250 or less, it would fall within that. Um, Wine Walk, the March Wine Walk historically has been 800, an average of 800 participants, um, for the last three years. Those 800 participants, we have 12 locations. It's a six-hour event. Not all of those 800 participants are there for the entire six hours, and they are never, ever in one location at the same time. I mean, the max that we see is no more than 30 in, across those locations. But if you ran the numbers and they all showed up at, at the same time, and they were all going to the same stop, you know, the same 12 stops at the same time, it would be 67. It is an outdoor distributed event. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, last but not least, I want to say that I know this is a difficult decision. Please remember your servers, your service industry personnel, many of whom live paycheck to paycheck. We want them to be safe, but we also would like them to survive. This is their busy season.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Sullivan Cockrell. I live right over here at 303 Rush Street. Two quick things. Um, last night, I don't know if any of you saw it, Representative Katie Porter, when she was questioning, I believe, one of the heads of the CDC about the tests and the cost of the tests for people that didn't have insurance, she added it up, and it was like $1,331. She did get him to commit, um, and he's got a special law, that whether you have insurance or you don't have insurance, you can be tested and you will not be charged for it. So I know maybe a lot of people in here have insurance, it's not a concern, but, um, I think it's very important that for people that have the symptoms, that they don't worry about money standing in the way of getting them tested. And then my other comment is about closing the schools. You can add Kentucky to the list. My son is a teacher in Kentucky. His wife is a speech pathologist, and Governor Beshear ordered them closed for two weeks. My son and his wife, they're both 31, with a little one-and-a-half-year-old grandson of mine, they're going to be fine at home, but they are both so concerned for their students and their families, um, especially my daughter-in-law, the rural county, she's a speech pathologist and is rather poor. Kids, there's no place for these kids to be taken care of. Sometimes that meal at school is their meal or two a day, and their parents have to work, and there's not even daycare available. So they're both so consumed with worry about the ripple effect for two weeks, unexpected at the last minute, that it's going to have to the community, um, because of the parents would have been. So I, I don't know how it is in Florida, if somebody is gonna, how it worked in Kentucky, was the governor got on the phone with all the superintendents and they made the decision together to close for two weeks. So what, what, how would that work here?
Yeah, so I can, I can address that. Um, so the, the school system is completely separate from us. There's a whole different school board, governing body, um, also elected by the people that will make all those decisions, school-related, and, um, I, I know they're weighing all the same, the same thing. So I'd say, stay, stay tuned to the, to, um, you know, to, to the, the county school board for the latest updates on what they're doing. Last I heard is they're going on spring break, and then they're, they're, uh, coming back after spring break. But, but, you know, that can change momentarily.
Maybe we can just try to be prepared as a community to reach out to those that may be severely impacted. And as one who was a server decades ago, please do tip your servers very well. I'm sure they're all stressed out.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Do you want my comments? Any others wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, come in.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Wilkins, and these stories are very difficult to hear because there's going to be pain no matter what. So you have a tough job. Two years ago, I was admitted to the hospital, Adventist Hospital near Ormond. I was diagnosed with a kidney infection, and that took place in the middle of a flu epidemic here. I had to remain in the emergency room for three nights and two and one-half days because there were no available beds. Considering the demographics of this area, considering the way that this disease is being transmitted, and considering the incubation period, I ask you to do what you can to limit gatherings for as short a period as you can, because any one of us in this room right now can have this disease and not know it. We could be transmitting that to each other right now. We don't know, because of the paucity of test kits, it will become clearer later. But please remember, it's not just people who are at risk for the disease itself, but rather everyone else who might need treatment. And if the medical system is going to be overstressed, then the effective population is much larger than we've even been considering. So thank you, and I know you've got a tough job ahead of you.
Thank you.
Gary Norville, Gary Norville, owner of American Aero Services. I guess you had a couple of questions for me, Jason, about things that we have going on. It sounds like our well-loved Hootenanny is probably going to get canceled, since it's going to be on city property. Whether you knew that or not, I don't know. But, uh, am I fair to say that somebody's going to call Dr. McGee and tell her that we'll have to postpone it for another time?
That's what we're here today to figure out, frankly. I, I would say that's not a foregone conclusion at this point.
Okay, all right, so I'll stick, I'll stick around.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to figure out.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
But we'll let Jason call, whoever has to be called.
You're going to make a lot of children unhappy.
Look, this is not going to be a fun thing, no matter what we do. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, just, first of all, I'd like some clarification from the doctor about testing. We hear that term over and over again, and now I understand there aren't any tests. We don't have any testing. What kind of testing is being done, first of all? So if I could clarify that, that would really help.
Okay. Is that your only, is that your only comment, or do you have more? All right, let's, let's, let her go ahead and finish, and then we can speak to that.
As many of you know, I'm the co-chair of the Charming Home Tour, which is scheduled for Thursday. Uh, at this point, we've sold over 350 tickets. We have 80 volunteers that are on schedule for that event, which runs from 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. It is, I think, as someone described, a distributed event, in the sense that there's no time at which everybody will be together in one particular place. However, our, uh, target, uh, participants are all, uh, in that demographic. So we're trying to figure out what to do. Um, we've only had one email to date, uh, came in earlier this morning of, of some concern by one of the, uh, volunteers. Uh, no one else has contacted us with any questions, but we're trying to decide what to do with this event, which is scheduled for that time. So any guidance and help that you can give would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If you wanted to, if you had any answers.
So the health department does have testing, but, um, and they can come. So if a patient is sick and admitted to the hospital and we suspect coronavirus, they will be contacted, and the health department will come to the hospital and do the testing on that patient. If, as a doctor's office has contacted the health department, if the patient is in the office, they'll come to the office. If we've done a phone call, um, conversation with the patient and we instructed them to stay home, then we'll notify the health department, and they will go out to their homes and do testing. So that testing is available, but that's in limited supply. And so the testing that has been developed by the commercial labs, so Quest and LabCorp, it exists now. It took a couple of weeks to develop, um, and, but it's going to probably take a couple more weeks until it's rolled out to physician offices and hospitals, and that we understand how to use it. I would anticipate, I don't really know for sure, but I would anticipate it's a sample that we would get done in your hospital or in your doctor's office, and then it would be shipped to the lab. I do know that those commercial testing, they said it takes about 24 to 48 hours turnaround time to know the results. But beyond that, we, my office, our hospital, hasn't seen those kits.
Got it. Thank you. Other comments?
I just want to add to what the doctor said. I believe today Roche Diagnostics had an emergency approval from the FDA for a test. It reports out in three to four hours.
That'd be good.
How, how, what capacity they'll have, how fast, I have no idea.
Okay. Other public comments? Lisa, yeah, do you want to, is that a whole thing? So keeping this pretty casual, kind of, and this is a community dialogue, but trying to maintain some order.
Just a quick question. When we say health department, are we talking about one person? Are we talking about several people? In other words, if two doctor's offices call, are there two people to go out and test? I, so I mean, I'd, I'd like to have some quantitative information.
So that's, I don't know if you know that, that probably is the best question for the health department itself, maybe, or do you know off the top of your head?
I don't know the exact answer to that. I do know that I personally have called the health department, um, for 24 hours and not received a response back. And, um, I have no idea what their capacity is. But I'm talking, but the, but the direction we're receiving is from the Volusia County Health Department. But I don't know what their capacity is.
Okay. Any other, and let me be clear at this point, because there's a lot of things- Okay. And let me be clear at this point, because there's a lot of things that are outside the control of the people in this room. We have a sliver of control. It's about this narrow. Things like the school system, things like Daytona State, things, there's a lot of things that are way above our pay grade. And, and so, you know, there's, there's many other meetings and, you know, like this happening with health department officials, school department officials, elected leaders up and down the chain of command, you know, not chain of command, but up and down the different levels, you know, county, state, federal. So trying to just keep this on the things we can talk about, the things that are important to, you know, like you mentioned earlier, that we got events that are about to happen. What, what should we do? How should we approach that? So open to other comments, but I'd love to just keep it kind of relegated to that. Yes, ma'am, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Linda Embry. I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce, and we are dealing with this like everybody else in the community. We've had several events in the upcoming months. We have a 5K, which is a big fundraiser for the chamber, and we postponed it. And we're looking at what is best for the community and their health. We still encourage everybody to go out there and support local businesses and do what you can. We are not the experts on this. Every day you look at the news and you get more and more information. Disney closed yesterday. They didn't. So I think that we just all have to step back and not panic right now and still support our local businesses, but at the same time, we need to be cognizant of what's going on and not create an environment where people might be gathered and might get sick. So if anybody has any questions about what's going on in the environment, what the, not the environment, what the chamber's doing with events, please feel free to call us. But at the same time, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's me. So just to clear, over here, to clarify, the chamber canceled all of, or postponed events through end of March, right?
Through March. We had a general membership luncheon scheduled. Mayor, you were going to be speaking in March, and based on what the input was from our members and our community, we postponed it.
Postponed.
So we're looking at every day, we're going to hear new news from the community, from the, so as far as March goes, we are postponing, and we're going to look at April, and who knows, we're going to see from the CDC and from everybody else, the experts, maybe we need to cancel those events too. But for right now, we're just every day, and I hate to say playing it by ear, but that's what we're doing, so.
All right. Hey, hang on, we're, we can't, this, I don't want to go back.
We're not canceling. We're postponing.
Postponing, all right. Thank you for sharing what the chamber is doing.
Scott. All right, so I have to be careful on this one because we had Elaine speaking for Faba, and we've had the chamber, and I'm part of both of those things as well, speaking just from the standpoint of a real estate broker's owner in a narrow lane.
Speak to us.
Whatever the decisions are that go forth here, just be very careful that the way that we put it out to the world is that through an abundance of caution, if we're making any decisions to postpone things, I can tell you from a real estate standpoint, we have already had people who've said, hey, we're not flying out of New York or Connecticut or places in the Northeast to come down to Florida right now because we don't want to get in the big metal germ tube and fly down to Florida. Not because they're afraid to be here, but they don't want the transportation risks. We've had people who were thinking about selling a house who've said, I don't want people coming into my house, so until this is over with. So there's having substantial ripple effect impacts on all businesses, whether it's hospitality or real estate. I imagine folks that are standing out from the Dairy Queen, there's probably some people who go, hey, I'm not going to go stand there in that crowd. Just, I think whatever message we put forth, it just needs to be something that's very clear. We don't have an issue. We're trying to avoid one going forward. The last thing we want is for somebody to say, hey, there were six cases of coronavirus, and I don't even want to say it. There were cases of coronavirus anywhere near where we are, because the long-term effect of that six months from now is people say, hey, when it's time to go to the beach in the summertime, don't go to New Smyrna, because they had to say, you got a tough decision ahead of you. And what you guys do is, I'm glad not to be sitting on that side today, but just be careful as we go forward that it's really put forth in a very clear, we don't have an issue, we're trying to avoid it, let's make sure that the bars and restaurants that do stay open have the opportunity to continue to do business, and we're just doing the best we can to support the community. My two cents as a real estate person today.
Thank you, Scott. Well said. Any other public comments relevant to this issue? All right. I'm seeing none, so we'll pause public comments. Not opposed to maybe if we have questions for some representing different groups in the room, we might, might go back to that. Vice Mayor, you've spoken already on this. I was going to see if others had a chance, or we can go to you.
Well, you can go.
Go to you. All right, go to Vice Mayor.
For the doctor, my question on outdoor type of events. How would you rate their susceptibility to a problem compared to an indoor event? And then for outdoor events that go inside, no.
So first, I have no idea. But secondly, I would say the rate of transmission, it's spread by respiratory droplets, whether you're inside or you're outside. If you're within six feet of someone who's coughing or sneezing, and they're not taking appropriate precautions and covering their cough or covering their sneeze, and then sanitizing their hands afterwards, then you're at risk. And I don't think it makes much difference whether it's in the open arena or the inside arena. But, but really, nobody really knows. But that would be my, my take on that.
So while you're at that, I did have another question, too. So you're stressing kind of this transmission through the airborne droplets.
Not airborne.
Not airborne, sorry.
It's like people spit, like it's on you. Airborne is worse.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So what about surfaces and, you know, handshakes and lingering on a surface, things like that? Is that lower?
Definitely linger on surfaces. They don't have a clear idea of how long. Most viruses, it's a few seconds. Some viruses, like hepatitis C virus, it's several minutes. So I don't think anyone knows an answer for sure what this, how long this one lingers on surfaces, but we know viruses do linger on surfaces.
But the proper, the primary source of, of human-to-human transmission is the coughing, sneezing?
Right. But if you, someone, you're using a computer, you cough and sneeze on that computer, and somebody else comes and sits right behind you on that computer, chances are that virus will be there. But again, nobody knows how long this particular virus lives on those surfaces.
Gentlemen, comments?
I'll take a stab at it. Well, I appreciate everybody coming out, and I know everyone is on their toes about this. As Scott pointed out, I'm also a small business owner in town. And when I go to, and I've thought about it, we've taken a lot of precautions at my business. We're constantly sanitizing, washing hands. Here's what I like to stress, because this is how I thought about it for myself. I would rather have a consistent group, consistent base or flow of customers coming to my business than trying to get everything at one time. What I'm saying is we're in the middle of a pandemic. What we do now for the next few months is going to determine how bad this gets. Right now, we have no cases locally. We don't, as far as we know, we don't have it in New Smyrna. So I think we need to be incredibly cautious. So what I'm saying with my business is, the worst thing that can happen to me is a pandemic that explodes, and I have no business. If I have to shut down because the community is full of this and there's no workers, and I have no revenue, that's what concerns me the most as a business owner. It is not, this is my busiest month, how can I get as much as I can as fast as I can? It is about, look, we have something truly unique and different that has happened here. And depending on how we play our cards, it's the old phrase, can you see the forest through the trees? I urge people to look long-term. I may not have the best March or the best April that I've had, but at least I'm open, money's coming in, I'm paying my bills, I'm keeping people employed, and I'm making some money. Keep that in mind as we go through this process to make very important decisions about what will we here on the commission, and we as citizens, and we as private business owners, are going to play in this pandemic. So the recommendations I'm going to make are a lot to do with how I would approach my own business. I am not going to tell someone they should close their business down, but we certainly do not want to get to a point like Italy is at, where the government has essentially shut down the entire country. So let's, let's use some common sense. Let's not get too far outside the lanes and keep in perspective what's going on here. And as long as we do that and keep a level head and make good decisions, I think that we can come out on the other side of this overall pretty good. Now, what's that means for specifics? I think we are on the side of caution. I'm not inclined to tell private businesses at this point what they can and can't do. I'm inclined to support city-sponsored or, or large events in city buildings to be postponed. However, because there's nothing going on right now, and it's not a sense of extreme emergency in our community, we can always come back to an emergency meeting and shut something down more aggressively. So I'm a little flexible on this. I don't think we need to panic. There's certain things that are happening this weekend and the next, over this next week. And I think it's, you know, Elaine brought up, well, what are we going to classify as a large gathering? Yeah, that's difficult for us to do, and it's very arbitrary for us to make that decision. So that, that, I'm a little concerned about you wanting us to do that, because we don't have any more wisdom than you do, whether it's two-fifty, five-hundred, two-thousand. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I'm willing to discuss it in more detail.
Very, very well said. Yeah, and certainly we can, we can come back. I mean, we can, in fact, one of the things I was going to suggest for consideration is, do we want to have a, go ahead and schedule another one of these, so it doesn't have to have that emergency title or feel to it, just to kind of pull away from it, feeling like we're, you know, adding to, again, the panic, but knowing that we probably should stay on top of this and just address it on an ongoing basis, on a recurring basis.
I think us having assessment meetings every, at least once a week, would be a pretty good idea.
Yeah. Commissioner Hartman, you haven't spoken yet on this. What are your thoughts?
My understanding of this, this is just another version of flu. Just, it actually affects the elderly different.
Hang on, let's, let the commissioner speak, and then we'll let whoever he's speaking to respond.
Because it's flu-like symptoms, and, and so it's a version of the flu. Is that incorrect?
Doctor, go ahead. Yes. If that's, you're asking the doctor.
The influenza virus is a different type of virus. They're both viral illnesses. This is the, a coronavirus strain that's a more virulent strain than the typical coronavirus that we see that causes normal upper respiratory infections and things like that. The, so the difference, so is it affecting the same kind of populations, the elderly, people who are more at risk? Yes. Flu is different. Is, is young persons and pregnant people are also at high risk. The difference with flu and the virus, this virus as well, is that flu severity of illness is complicated by superimposed bacterial infections like pneumonias and other things, and those are, tend to be the patients that don't fare very well. With the coronavirus, there's not really secondary infections. It's primarily just this virus that's causing all of these issues. The other difference is in the flu, the main respiratory issues with bronchitis, things like that, it doesn't cause that ARDS, that Adult Respiratory Distress Syndrome, that causes all those, that, those inflammatory markers in the lungs to get so inflamed. People with ARDS typically require mechanical ventilation with a breathing tube. That's not usually the case with bacterial pneumonia on top of flu. So the respiratory severity seems to be a little bit higher.
Okay. All right. So, and I think what we've done and demonstrated thus far is we've taken added precautions. We've given people as much information as we can. I think that us as a city can certainly control what we do and our events, but at this time, I'm inclined to let those other groups be the ones to decide on what they want to do. From what I read the other day was all three cases were related to outside travel, so nothing has been a cross-contamination or a cross-contact type of a disease. So I'd be more inclined to control what we can control, ask those other vendors out there, businesses that, to use the best common practices that we know of, and to, and to use their better common sense. We're all adults about this. And certainly, I think we should be briefed. And if something else comes up, pops up, then we certainly can take a further action at that time. But it's surprising to me that Orange County's had no reported cases yet, you know, and they have one of the busiest airports in the country. So that was kind of surprising to me when I read all the statistics. I mean, you know, most everybody's taken a two-week period. I don't see, I see some things going on for the next two weeks, but I certainly think that, that we can, before, during our next meeting or before the next meeting, we could have another update on where we're going to go, maybe a pre-meeting, and, or if something happens, need be, we can meet again. But I'm inclined to let the businesses use their own best judgment.
Okay. So one of the, the concerns that I've heard and read is, when you look at other places like Italy, Commissioner McGurk mentioned, and the doctor mentioned earlier, this has such a, there's a long time before this can present symptoms where it can still be passed. Is that an accurate statement? So the concern is that you made a comment, there's no, you know, the three cases here that have just been reported, you know, are kind of related to this one Nile cruise type thing. The, the problem is, you know, my concern, and again, what I think others are concerned on, is we don't know yet. It can be fourteen days before we know the cases here. And when you look at some of the data that came out of Italy and China, you had a lot of spread kind of before they started taking measures like what we're talking about here and like what's happening here. And, you know, also, you talk about the business community, and, you know, it's, for those that want to believe this is all, you know, blown out of proportion, when you start seeing entities like the NBA and Disney, I mean, Disney has shareholders to answer to, and they have really, really smart people on staff making these decisions with, you know, literally millions of dollars a day in revenue at stake. And so for them to come out and do, you know, the elements of, I know it's all different scale as far as the exposure potential, but, you know, this is, this is serious. I mean, this is not, for those kind of entities to be taken serious tells me it's something that, is something to be taken serious. So, all right, so we need some clarity. I've heard, I think we heard some support from Commissioner McGurk on, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I'm trying to find if we had any kind of a middle ground on what actions we, we take today from, let's, let's bring it down this way, if we can. Let's just create some buckets here. So we've got some city meetings, when I say city meetings, things like the Leisure Activities Board, the Economic Development Advisory, it's already been canceled, citizen code enforcement, et cetera. My suggestion would be, and I don't think there's any pressing notice business at those meetings, my suggestion or thought would be, let's cancel those. If, if there's no pressing notice business at those, I would say we could cancel those through the month of March at a minimum and then readdress at our, at our next commission meeting. Let's, let's just take it chunk by chunk. What are this commission's thoughts on, on that suggestion?
I agree completely.
No problem.
Commissioner Hartman, any?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And Carrie, do we need to, do we want to take formal motions on those kind of things, or can we just?
Yes, let's take, just action minutes.
All right. So let's take a formal motion on that to just cancel, did you have additional comments on that?
No, I would make the motion.
Okay, so motion to, I want to be careful with wording, but I think canceling, because we're not postponing, we're going to, just, we'll pick them up in April. So we're going to cancel everything except for the regularly scheduled city com- So we're gonna cancel everything except for the regularly scheduled city commission meeting on March 24th. Um, at this time, all other meetings for the month of March, uh, city meetings will be canceled at this time. Is that, is that your motion?
Yes.
I just had a question.
Go ahead.
The, the code, the special magistrate hearing.
There, um, there's probably nobody here from code enforcement to find out how many people were talking about whether we could reach out to them individually, but they would have been served notice.
Yeah.
I can, we can find that out and continue it to the April meeting.
Okay. I mean, I think the measures that have been put in place by the governor gives us some latitude for things like that, right? So, all right. Okay, so I had a motion to add a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the role on that item.
Vice Mayor Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Okay, now we have, uh, there's another bucket of events, I think, that are events that we as a city are hosting. So one is here in an hour, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge Dinner. Um, I think that's gonna, that's gonna continue. It's too late to, to cancel that. I think attendance may be down, which is fine. Um, I may not stay the whole time. Um, are there others, as I, help me staff, as I scroll through this list, are there other things that are truly like we are the host of the meeting?
It's the sports complex.
The sports complex and the youth events, okay, so let's.
So, I'm sorry.
Very good.
I was gonna make a comment. I know that my son and daughter both do competitive sports. And most, all, all my children's, um, the, the, the governing bodies have stopped all that. Um, so when we're talking about these agencies, most of that has already been, been stopped by governing bodies. Um, but I certainly have no problem taking an extra step where kids are making contact with each other and bodily fluids can be spit and so on, could be transferring to each other. Um, at the sporting events, um, to, to cancel them, especially when there's competition from kids outside and you're intermingling from different counties and cities.
Cause while they're, Doctor, if I may, while they're at low, uh, youth is at low risk, they can be carriers. So they go home, they hug grandma, and that's an issue. Okay. So I think that's the concern, that's the concern there. All right, so gentlemen, we've got this bucket of, we are the host of the event. Um, primarily it looks like, again, through just the month of March, those are at the sports complex. Uh, my suggestion will be on those that we also, uh, suspend those events through the month of March. And we can always emergency reevaluate and, and put them back on the schedule too if this all clears up and goes away. So.
Mayor, make a motion to suspend all the city-sponsored events at the sports complex on the, uh, for the, erring on the side of caution.
And that, that would be till the end of the month?
Through the, through the, yes, through March.
Through March.
I'll second that.
All right, do you have a comment on that, staff? I saw y'all queue up.
We, we have the food trucks, um, and then we also have after-school and spring break.
What does that mean?
Yeah, tell us more about those events. Food trucks do the event out here, right?
That's at the end of the month.
We're talking about the sports complex.
Well, I thought you were talking about all youth activities. Sorry.
No, let's just talk about complex right now.
Separate.
All right, so just the sports complex, so none, neither of those are sports complex? Okay, so sports complex, we add a motion and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the role. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Does David see any problem with any of those? I mean?
Any red flags?
Effective when?
Probably.
Now. Well. If you wanna make it, make it Monday. He's got a big event on the Saturday tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I, I would, I, I don't have a problem. I mean, we're not, again, there's no cases here, there's no imminent, but I think, and, and, and there's, people are coming in. I don't have a problem Mondays.
There is so much scheduling on, uh, the participant parts and that, uh, this event on Saturday. So my recommendation would be to make it Monday, effective Monday.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that with my motion.
Okay, so the motion is effective Monday through the end of March. Does that, does that help?
Is that doable? I mean?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's doable. That gives us enough time to let everyone know and let all the terms know.
Okay.
Check with, yeah, did you have a comment or question on that? You, remind David of something?
I was just gonna point out that it's not just the primary tournament, it's like.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's the concern. For this weekend, you mean, right? Yeah.
We have, we have teams, we have, uh, the tournament this weekend has teams coming from probably eight, eight or nine different counties of Florida.
What, what sports are these? Because I'm surprised they haven't been canceled yet.
Which is exactly the kind of stuff that should be canceled, frankly.
UTRIP and Nation, which are two of the biggest tournaments, you know, organizers in the state, they're not gonna cancel. They're gonna force the cities and the complexes to cancel them. I mean, it's, travel baseball is a billion-dollar business now and.
So NBA is, uh, you know?
No, no, but, I mean, NBA is, it, that, that's at a different level. These, these organizers are not gonna cancel unless we cancel it on them.
They're coming from, how many, how many participants roughly, ballpark?
Um, I think right now they have maybe right around 30 teams. But in two weeks, there's 105 teams coming.
Well, the two, two weeks, I'm not worried about this Saturday. Two weeks wouldn't work.
This Saturday, there's, there's probably roughly 30, 25 to 30 teams right now.
Of how many players on each team?
12, 12 kids on a team. And they could add more or delete between now and Saturday depending on.
So we're talking 500-ish people wandering around the?
500 roughly kids and then plus their.
Yeah.
Well.
Parents' families.
So the irony of this is, this is exactly why we're canceling, we should be canceling these. Lots of kids coming in from outside the area, all co-mingling with each other.
That's exactly.
So I'm gonna remove that, and, and if they wanna hear from us, then I'm, I'm willing to give them what they don't wanna hear. If they're not, it, you know, I, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is there's been a lot of agencies that have err on the side of caution. And all the parents are aggravated, oh, we don't get to place, but we all get it. So if this organization wants to be an outlier and not possibly take the necessary precautions that they probably should, I'm more than willing to do that for them. So I'm gonna make a motion to cancel all sporting events through the month of March, starting today.
Okay.
That's my understanding. That was your original motion and I did second that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, just for the record, it wasn't, yes, but I amend.
I don't think you had amended, I don't think you had seconded the amendment.
I wouldn't have seconded the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion in a second. You like, you wanna say something?
Effective today.
Be effective as soon as humanly possible. City Clerk, if you'd call the role.
Vice Mayor Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's the right thing to do.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just one comment.
Sure.
Um, it's my understanding that the Florida CDC has set the number of people at 250 for an event that, and recommended that they all be canceled. So I think it's important that we canceled it now.
And I think that's a, and I'm more than comfortable with follow, following that criteria for us to go forward and any further recommendations we're making today.
Which we just followed that.
Very good.
I think it's the right call.
Tough one's gonna be.
Oh, I know, he's gonna make the tough one call.
You got 249 people coming and?
They're already here, probably.
They can go to the beach.
Okay, so did we cover the buckets that are kind of our direct control?
I think you did, Mayor, and then we'll, we'll come back to do evaluation as soon as something happened. If we need to have an emergency meeting, we'll let you know.
Yeah, we're not finished yet.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, we're not finished yet. All right, did we, anything we forgot? Any, Commissioner, any thoughts or questions on any city type of? You had a couple more. Nancy, what were your other buckets that we need to talk about?
Well, we'll cancel food trucks.
Yes, I, yeah.
Uh, the only other concern was the after-school program and.
That's the Babe James program.
And we only have less than 50 kids right now, so I think we'll be okay. They need a place to go, is what I was gonna recommend, so.
Okay, I think that continued. Obviously, I know we're stepping up sterilization. By the way, I wanna point out, I think it's just incredible, um, we've had many, I've been getting offers afforded to our city manager. We've had many different community partners that are in the cleaning business and the sterilization business. They've, they've offered to pro bono come in and help the city clean up parks, clean up playgrounds. Um, so really, um, you know, thrilled with the outreach, so I know we'll partner with some of those folks to help keep the Babe James Center and all those facilities clean, so. Chief, do you have other?
Uh, for Babe James, we are gonna provide her, uh, tympanic thermometers so she can scan those kids as they come in on, on a daily basis.
Perfect.
Additionally, going forward a week or two, do we anticipate more than three commissioners being out of town at, at any given time together?
Yeah.
Cause we would need a quorum of three to have an emergency meeting.
Yeah, so that was a question I had, let me just ask. I know we passed that emergency measure, but I was, just wanna make sure I was clear. Do three have to be present and then two could call in, or could we in theory have all call in if we just needed to?
So the normal rule is you have to have a physical quorum present.
That's what I thought.
Um, now the executive order did suspend rules, so I would say, you know, as.
True emergency, we could, okay. But we did pass that, as you recall, that emergency measure that we can do a call-in meeting if we just had to. Okay, so we cleared all of the, frankly, the easy ones. Comment?
Uh, the hard ones.
All right.
Uh, before the end of the month, we have a couple of large events planned at the Brandon Center.
Yes.
And I don't think we addressed the Brandon Center or other facilities, other than the sports complex.
I'm working through a bucket. So the next bucket I was gonna address is events that are private events but held in city facilities. Um, so we own the facility, we in theory could cancel it as the owner of the facility, but it is a private event. Uh, the two that I think fit that criteria are, are the two, since, this list that we have, gentlemen, I think are the ones that fit that criteria. Um, and that is the, the Brandon Center, the Coronado Civic Center. I'd actually be amazed if some of these don't, you know, I mean, the hub's already proactively canceled the one, uh, to, to postpone, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Keep, keep me honest, just postpone, uh, postpone that event. Um, so what is the commission's thoughts on this?
Mr. Mayor, I feel that we should use that 250 number as a guideline and proactively cancel any event greater than 250. I agree that most of these private, uh, entities will probably cancel anyhow. So I just think we should do that till the end of the month.
Okay, so, um, I have a suggestion by Commissioner, just any, any event on, uh, in a city facility that's, that expected attendance greater than 250, um, be, be postponed. In this case, I think that affects this Futures Foundation, the Atlantic Coast Church, and.
That's it.
The Hoot Nanny.
So the, where's, that one's not on this list. Where's that one?
The Hoot Nanny's at a hangar, not at the Brandon Center, right?
So it's a city-owned, that's a kind of a different bucket of city-owned facility. I was gonna get to that one next.
Yeah, the Hoot Nanny.
Yeah.
That's not included in what we're discussing.
So what, yeah, what I'm discussing specifically right now, those at the Brandon Center, Coronado Civic Center, I, I would throw in the Live Oak Cultural Center, those facilities that we rent as a, you know, in a one-time basis, not a leased facility, like a hangar, we'll, we'll get there.
And here's, just so you know, I just checked my emails and they are postponing also. So the only one so far is Atlantic.
Atlantic Coast.
And they're, they'll go go too, so they can postpone.
Sure, they can postpone as well, yeah. And some of these others will postpone also if they, really that, that orchestra one, I'm sure will postpone as well, but.
Wanna make.
Depending on the ticket. Okay, I thought we did.
Mayor, I'll make, if you're ready, I'll simply just make a motion to, um, postpone from the Brandon Center and Coronado Civic Center, any organizations with more than 250 people.
If you would, can we just expand that motion to include just any city-owned facility that is leased, that is rented on a one-time basis? Cause we got Live Oak Cultural Center, we got a few other, few other kind of buckets of spaces.
Yeah, again, does that, but are we gonna pick something up in that that is unintended then? Is there any, any quick thought on that from staff?
Any, any that are written on a one-time basis, just the thought process.
My motion, my motion is to postpone any, any event in a city-owned building greater than 250 people through the end of March.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
Uh, just, we talked about the, uh, hangar event. Would that fall into that?
It's not a city-owned.
Yeah.
Federal-owned, but we manage it.
And it's a, the notion is just the, the one, the one-offs, the, the, they rent it for one night, they have an event. That's what we're trying to capture here. And then we're gonna get to, we're working our way through the bucket.
Is, is that owned or leased?
No, it's leased from us.
Oh, okay.
They leased the facility from us.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a long-term thing. They have it, they, yeah, we're gonna get there. All right, could, uh, did you have something to say to that? I thought I heard you.
No, I just would be surprised if you get 250 people at Live Oak, but.
I, I agree. And if you did, you couldn't hear anything anyway.
That's right.
But we're working on that.
Working on it.
That's close. All right. Next week, awesome, that's super exciting. The one highlight. Uh, City Clerk, if you'd call the role on that.
Vice Mayor Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Did you get me?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so now we have the, the bucket of events that are events that we permit. So these are things that we have, they've come to us on the consent agenda probably, and we've issued a permit for these events to occur. Um, may involve a street closure, you know, whatever bucket it fits in that requires it to come to us for a permit. So these are things like the, uh, the 2Ks, the mac and cheese challenge. Um, I'm, I'm assuming most of these required some kind of a special, Nancy, I'm gonna look at you on that one. I'm assuming, I, I'll get you in a minute, I'll let you speak maybe.
We listed everything, um, between the Visitors Bureau, us, Flagler Avenue, so we have everything.
So these are just all events that are happening, not necessarily ones that we have specifically permitted? Okay.
But a lot of them are, but the 5K, the 2K, that's on the beach, so that's out of our jurisdiction.
We didn't issue any permits for that? Okay.
Um, and, and the only one you really did was the St. Patrick's Day, um, for Cezanne for Flagler Tavern.
And, and remind me what that kind of entails, that's.
Or the Beer Garden.
The Beer Garden, closure of the parking lot type thing. Okay. I, 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 hang on real quick, let me, um, I won't let the community be involved, so I'm trying to, trying to do this a little bit informally, but trying to keep some decorum as well, so, um, Commissioner, okay, we're just taking a quick, quick questions, comments. Okay, I saw you first and then if the other two wanna just come up here so we can get it on the record? Keep it brief if you would.
Just really quickly about the St. Patrick's Day parking lot.
Yes.
Is, the reason why we have it is an extension of premise because there are so many people that come inside the Flagler Tavern. So if you limit us.
That's probably not the right words to say.
By you make, but it's the truth and that's in our legal rights, you haven't limited that yet. So our, our biggest fear and what made us want to move forward with the event is by canceling the parking lot, the same number of people will try to get in half the space, therefore creating the thing that we're trying to avoid. And we're perfectly willing to limit the number of people in that permitted area of our parking lot to 250 or less.
Okay.
We have full security, it's fully coordinated.
Perfect. Thank you for that comment. Uh, while you're coming forward, just breaking news, Volusia County School Board just closed schools for the month.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Be the Antique Market on the 21st on Canal Street, but that would be probably more than 250 people, so.
Yeah, okay. And that one is the one we permitted, right? Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's one we're gonna, we'll, we'll talk, talk through. Yes, ma'am, quick comment, question?
The Charming Home Tour that's, um, scheduled for March 19th is permitted and we pay the fee.
Okay. So we got a couple of those, the Antique Market, the Charming Home Tour, um, and the, these, the, the, what's that? Go ahead. Y'all don't get used to this, but. Yeah. Well, let's, we're gonna get through March. We'll, we'll do all this again for April. We're just gonna get to the end of March. Okay, any other questions of the commission? Do we need clarification? So there's this batch of, of events that we have, we're not necessarily a part of, they're private events. Uh, but in some cases, we have issued permits from the Happen, Charming Home Tour, Antique Vintage Market, and then some nuances of this, although we don't control all of it, like the 5K element and some others, so, um, what are the thoughts?
So we, we have two other things that kind of hang in there. You got the car show on, on Canal.
Yep.
And you do have the Wine Walk.
We do have Wine Walk and we have the, the, uh, that's April though.
Yes, so I'm good until?
Yeah, you're, you're good for now, until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting, we'll.
See you April 1st.
Well, maybe before then, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get more heads up.
It's, it's April, April.
It's April, I know, but I'm saying, we're gonna try to talk about this on a recurring basis, so if you start seeing cases here, then, I, anyway, yes. But now you're good.
Thank you very much.
We're just trying to get through March. All right. We're just trying to get through March, all right. And we got the Farmers Market, it's a good point. We permit that one as well, right?
The Department does.
Technically, like a long...
It's not through us, it's through that.
It is.
It is.
Well, no, no, no.
It's an agreement, yeah, it's like an ordinance type thing, yeah. Okay, you were saying something?
No, I finished, I just wanted to bring up those two events.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurk, comments?
So, that was an interesting comment that Alade made. There are certain events that can be canceled and people won't show up. Then there are certain events that we can say are canceled and people are gonna still show up.
Yep.
So you take the St. Patrick's Day type stuff, and the bottom line is, everybody's still coming. It's gonna be a personal decision, take the Farmers Market, you say it's canceled, people don't come. So, I don't think it, in these specific cases on Flagler, you know, I'm intrigued, you know, the revelation just hit me that, that people who still want to go out, regardless of what's going on, are gonna go down there. And I think that there's nothing we can do to stop that, and we do have a permit in place, which includes criteria. If we take the permit away, then the criteria of the permit requirement is now not necessary. But that's not gonna stop the people from coming. So, the common sense says, the crowds coming to Flagler for the St. Patrick's Day celebrations, there's just no reason to try to manage that.
So let's, so let's take, so we've, just so we have clarity, so let's talk about the St. Patrick's Day, the Charming Home Tour, the Vintage Market, the Farmers Market, and the Wine Walk. Those are, I think, the five key events we probably need to make a decision on, and... And the car show tomorrow is a good point, six events. Did I miss any? All right, so, interesting comments, I kind of agree with you on the St. Patrick's Day. I feel like, I don't know that we, I don't know what we'll do, actually, if we cancel it, it may make it even worse, because as you mentioned, it may cram everybody in. What about your thoughts on the other, the other five? So it's the Charming Home, Antique Vintage, Car Show, Farmers Market, Wine Walk.
So, individually, you go down these, some of these, if canceled, people, if the vendors don't show up, people have nothing to go to.
Yeah.
So those are easier to cancel.
Those are the five, I think, are.
Now, when you have something, this home thing, I'm not sure what that is, but if that's like tour of homes, it's really, we can't tell a homeowner that you can't do that if people still show up.
Yeah, Nancy, what exactly did we permit on that? What is it, remind me, what's the element?
The Commission did not permit, they just came to the special event committee.
Special event, okay.
And that's why, you know, you don't know them as well.
Yeah, so my...
And it's a little confused.
All right, come over to the mic. Again, this is a different meeting than most of our meetings. Right, come up to the mic, if you would, so somebody can catch it. Somewhere Mayor Hathaway's cringing right now. The least decorum we've ever had in a meeting.
It's an emergency meeting.
I'm Frank Sharp, and I am the Vice President of the New Smyrna Beach Residents Coalition,
and we do a home tour, this is our third year. We have six properties, we show, we've sold 350 tickets. The properties are quite far apart between Faulkner and Riverside. We did go in front of a committee, we did pay a fee.
Right.
We did get a permit, now, I don't know what that means.
They were asking if I had to, you had to go before.
No, we have no road closures, but we do have a traffic plan.
Yes, okay.
So, my point is, is that if there's none, some of these nuances like yours, you can, we could say, you gotta cancel it, but if people show up for it, people show up for it.
That's true.
So, it's really, I think a number of these things, if we can control it, I think we should postpone it, but I think we're gonna have to go back and leave some common sense up to the people who are holding these events, and push back and say, that's gonna have to be your call. Now, you don't have 350 people showing up in a home, they're moving around, but, you know, I don't know how many people want strangers moving in and out of their house, so. I guess, so what I'm saying there is, I think that there's, we can try to nitpick this, but basically, you know, the Farmers Market, the Car Show, we can call that off, because...
That's what I'm thinking, it's event by event, we're gonna...
Yeah.
A question for Faba, the Wine Walk, I mean, that's at the very end of the month, that's the 28th, who knows what things will look like by then? So, if, we're gonna meet between now and then, so if we, if we left that one, because that is one that we could, and if this Commission chose, if we said no, that event doesn't happen. If we left it for now, how quick is that to kind of, if we said on the 21st or 24th or whenever we meet, hey, that doesn't need to happen, just pull the plug on that?
We have a very, most of our sales are walk-up, but we do have online sales, and we have extended a very liberal refund policy because we're encouraging everyone to not come out if they're not healthy.
So, gentlemen, my thoughts on this, I think the St. Patrick's Day thing, I think that makes it worse for us to actually cancel. I would encourage folks to use common sense on that one, I think it makes it worse if we cancel. Charming Home Tour, same thing, I don't know that we really control it. I do think there's risk to that community and that demographic, so I would encourage you all to be extremely cautious, but that's my thoughts on that one. I think the Farmers Market, the cars, and, which one am I missing? And the Vintage Market, I think those, we should pull, because Vintage Market, I don't know if it's come from a long way away, so I think we, I think those we could probably cancel. For now, we can leave Wine Walk, I'd be surprised if it, I mean, I hope we've reversed it as a nation, and, but, I think we could postpone the decision because we can make it closer to it without impacting. So that's my thoughts on those events specifically. Others, thoughts?
On the home tour and the tent in the parking lot, they're on private property, so I really don't think we should interfere with them, they should go forward. I would like to take the Wine Walk out, it is on our property, and we do have a meeting on the 24th, which we could then change it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I don't really want to debate you, I just see the effect that it has in the people. I know they go in and out, I've been on it more than once, so I just find that you do get a lot of people on the street, they do intermix with each other, so.
Okay.
It's probably, it's like a car show.
Yeah.
Really, it's a group of people, it's a class of events, and I would like to see that canceled.
Okay, other comments on these, or the thoughts on...
Yeah, I mean, I agree, the, I'm a little stuck on Wine Walk, I think, I think right now, what I'd like to do with that, that's kind of sitting in the middle. I think we go ahead and cancel that, and then maybe we can reestablish at the next City Commission meeting. You know, I hate to get so technical on each one, but the Wine Walk is, I think, a little more, it, I think Commissioner Colodey makes a valid point, but I, something I'm willing to reconsider at the Commission meeting on the 24th. And I think you, and if we give you the permission to do it, depending on what the circumstances are, it may not be perfect, it may not be exactly like they always are, but it gives the ability to be able to get something out of it.
Mr. Hartman, thoughts?
Yeah, I'd rather wait until we get closer to the 28th to decide on that one's. At the next meeting, we could discuss that, or if something happens between now and then. Like she said, it's on private property, so they could still show up anyway and participate. The only public part is the streets and the sidewalks, so. My question is, the Antique Vintage Market, is that something that can be postponed? Is that...
Yeah, they would, Liz is the Chair of the CFC.
I mean, how many people do you usually expect at that? Okay, yeah, I'd be in favor of canceling that one.
It's one of my favorite events, I mean, this is painful for us, I gotta tell you, this is...
Reschedule it, I'd like to reschedule it, postpone it, you know, we can...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, you know, the Car Show, I'm not, I could live with that because that's more outside from one end to the other, they kind of mill around, there's not like 20 or 30 people all in one place. And again, we're all adults, we need to use good common sense, so...
Okay, so, I heard, just for the motion maker, I heard consensus around, or at least three out of four on delaying the decision on Wine Walk, agreement on the Vintage Market, and all the other elements. I think, and I think there were three out of four on the Car Show with Commissioner Hartman saying not to address that one, so. And we can do them one at a time, or one major, one big motion?
I think we should try to keep as much consistency as possible, you know, that's very difficult.
I think so, too, yeah.
So we've got the Vintage Car Show, I mean, the Vintage Market, the Car Show, the Farmers Market? And what?
Those were the, those are the three that right now I heard consensus around that we should postpone, with the exception of Commissioner Hartman on the Car Show.
With the Farmers Market, are you gonna close tomorrow?
Yeah.
Or following week?
No, tomorrow, as of today.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of people there. All right, those are the three I heard, I think we could, let's take a motion on those.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion to postpone those events past the month of March, do I have a second?
Correct.
Second.
All right, City Clerk, if you'd call the roll for those three.
Vice Mayor Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right, and so all the others, we'll have those as pending, I don't think we had enough consensus on what to do on those, so I think we'll leave those as pending. Any, I have a couple other things I wanted to clarify, any other, any event buckets or categories that I missed? Staff, speak up, this is your chance, I'll get to you in a second. Yes?
I don't know if we've covered it under all the other things, but any event that is geared towards the, or programs that are geared towards seniors. I don't know how many, I know we work with the...
What about the Council of Aging?
Almost every event in New Smyrna is geared... Sorry, yeah.
Staff has already canceled all senior events with partner, with Council on Aging.
Thank you.
The only thing with Council on Aging that's gonna continue is the Meals on Wheels.
Okay, that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I'm glad to hear that.
Any other event buckets, yes, Lisa, just quickly?
Well, Norwood's Farmers Market on Saturday morning, and I don't know what's happening.
And we, that's, and that's not permitted, we don't...
It's not private, it's private property.
That's just a private event, they do, that doesn't come to us, I can't, I would discourage it, but it's not, I can't shut it down at this point. Okay, two, any, so, anything that I missed, anything to say?
No, just, I just want to make one comment.
Sure.
I think it's a short notice for the Farmers Market for tomorrow.
Yes.
It's 5:00.
It is.
People are, they, he had it 7:00 in the morning, so...
I would say...
That's my only, I think if I wanted to do, just talk from the next Saturday.
I think we can get the word out.
I think we should get the word out. Obviously, if anybody shows up to sell their products, I don't think we should take strict action against them, and if we can get the word out, I'd really appreciate that. Just in all of this, the more action we take now, the shorter the event is going to be. I think that's the key to everything we're doing. I myself have canceled travel out of state professionally, much to chagrin of the people I was supposed to go to, but it's really the right thing to do. So, I think we should do those things.
So, two last things, one thing for the Commission, then one last comment. Any fees that have been paid related to anything we just addressed, I would suggest that those be fully refunded? Any concerns with having staff do that?
Need a motion on it?
Let's take, let's take a motion, just so we have clarity.
Motion to approve, return the fees of any event that's been canceled.
Okay.
Amendment? Or they could use it for a future event?
Yeah, or is it credit, whichever is easiest for staff to manage, if that's okay?
Is staff comfortable with that? Or it can be used for a future event?
Okay, all right, City Clerk, if you'd, did I get a second? Yeah, need a second?
I'll second that.
All right, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes, all right, and not for action right now, but I also would like, when we talk about this, as we start coming out the other side, I'd like to proactively consider, for those that have been postponed, been inconvenienced, that we look at ways to try to help put a spark back to those reduced fees, reduced red tape, you know, maybe we call some special meetings to approve events on short notice, whatever those things may be, hopefully as a Commission and as a city, consider those things. And lastly, I would say, I'll open it to the Commission for closing comments also, but to Scott's point earlier, everything that we just did for Casimir, this is the abundance of caution. This is, this is trying to, trying to prepare for the, you know, prepare for the unknown, not trying to add to panic, not trying to overreact, but underreacting is not great either, so. You know, New Smyrna remains open for business, we remain committed to our business community, but more than anything, the health of our community, our citizens, our guests, and just as soon as we're kind of on the back end of this, New Smyrna's gonna come out stronger than ever, and I think Commissioner McGurk's comments at the very beginning were very well-made. I think the measures we're doing now will help us come out of this even faster than before, so. Closing comments from the Commission, any closing comments?
I need a clarification on a motion, please. All right, for the one regarding the Farmers Market, Car Show, and Wine Walk?
That was the Vintage Market, not the Wine Walk.
Okay, all right, so it's the Farmers Market, Car Show, and Vintage Market are canceled? Effective what day today? Okay, through the end of March.
Through the end of March, yep.
Thank you.
All right, staff, good, good, okay. Thank you all, meeting adjourned.
Good job.